Good evening. Welcome to the May 22 Newtown Township Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to start this meeting with our customary moment of silence, which is particularly meaningful with Memorial Day weekend coming up. We thank those that gave all for this country, and if we could think about that for a minute, I'd appreciate it. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Mr. Manager, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
There's one change. Item 7A is being removed from the agenda.
And that is the Pollinator Garden at Robert Church Park. Thank you. Next, we have Historical Architectural Review Board. Do we have anybody? No? Can you? Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment about Pollinator Garden.
No public comments next.
Sorry, yes. Sorry, everybody. My first time. Do we have any public comment? This is our first round of public comment. Anything that is not on the agenda, please come up and feel free to speak about.
Charles Foyer, Newtown Walk. And first, just to thank you again to the Newtown Township Police for their vigilance and diligence at the Newtown Yardley Tara Mid Block Crosswalk over the last 20 months. It's been helpful, but it hasn't resolved the purpose of the project. At last meeting, I submitted, and Mr. Fisher wrote down questions, and my purpose here tonight, and I followed it up, actually, with email as per the requirements or request of the township. I sent in my questions as well. And I want to make sure that you received them because we're hopeful that we'll get some answers to it. The questions regarding what the current status is and update is from the township engineer. And at this point, I would say, did anyone not get the questions? Because I made extra copies.
These are questions you submitted last time.
Well, I asked them, and Mr. Fisher wrote them down, but then I read on the township Board of Supervisors, they request that you send them in, so I wrote them again, and I submitted them, so we might get some answers tonight. Does anyone need a copy? Okay. So with that, it's just with great hope, I noticed, I had thought that it might be on the township engineer's report on the agenda, but find that it isn't. So perhaps he can address the questions that we posed last time. Thanks so much.
My name is Donna Sardula. My address is 11 Kingsley Court, Newtown, Pennsylvania. I'm here today, tonight, to present a petition on behalf of almost 800 concerned residents regarding the proposed Chick-fil-A development on Newtown Yardley Road and Upper Silver Lake Road. Before I continue, I'd like to hand out the petition. As many of you know, Newtown Equities LLC, which is a company based in Mount Laurel, New Jersey, representing Chick-fil-A, has filed for several variances to build a high-volume drive-through fast-food restaurant in a location that is less than 500 feet from residential homes. While the application has been granted an indefinite extension, this does not mean that the issue is resolved. It simply paused the process. Our petition has gathered 791 signatures so far. With the majority coming from our local area and the northeast region, our community has expressed strong opposition to this development for several reasons. First, increased traffic and safety risks. The current infrastructure on the Newtown Yardley Road heading towards the bypass is already inadequate to handle the existing traffic. Adding a high-traffic drive-through fast-food restaurant will lead to unbearable congestion and potential safety hazards, including blocked emergency accesses to houses on Old Frost Road and Vero Avenue. The second is the impact on the neighborhood character. The introduction of a Chick-fil-A so close to residential areas will fundamentally alter the character of our neighborhood. We moved to this community for peace and tranquility, and this will be disrupted by increased traffic along with noise, smell, and light pollution. The third is the precedent for future development. Approving these variances sets a dangerous precedent for future commercial developments in Newtown, specifically along the bypass. First Wawa, and now a high-traffic establishment like Chick-fil-A. This risks turning the bypass into a congested area, undermining its purpose, and transforming our area into a truck stop rather than preserving its quaint, unique charm. We urge you to reject any zoning changes and variances for this development. While the indefinite extension provides a temporary pause, we will remain vigilant. The continued collection of signatures on our petition underscores ongoing and growing opposition within our community. So in conclusion, I ask you to consider the voices of your constituents who have spoken clearly through this petition. Please help us preserve the character, the safety, and our quality of life here in Newtown. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. I'd like to say at this point, there are no, nothing in the immediate future will be happening with the Chick-fil-A. I think we know what everybody feels about it, our residents and some of us. So thank you for this. This helps a lot. Next item on our agenda is minor approvals, and we'll move on to Historical Architectural Review Board. Here he is.
Hello, members of the board. Thank you. Bill Mahler, Chair of the Newtown Township Historic Architectural Review Board. At our May 8, 2024 meeting, we had one application for a signage at 123 Sycamore Street. The owner and applicant of Joy Newtown is here.
Good evening. My name is Joy DeCaro. I'm applying for a sign at 123 North Sycamore Street in Newtown.
Do you want to say what it is?
I'm opening a, I like to call it a self-care studio. We'll have yoga, we'll have one-on-one healing modalities, workshops for people of all ages, really just helping educate how to help yourself. Looking forward to it. Thank you. With a pretty sign.
Yes.
I didn't know if you needed this or not.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. The board reviewed the application and voted to recommend approval of the application as it was submitted. We had no objections, and that passed unanimously.
Madam Chair, at this time, it would be appropriate for the board to entertain a motion to grant the application of Joy Newtown, PA, for a certificate of appropriateness for a sign at 123 North Sycamore Street, conditioned on compliance with the Harbs May 8, 2024 memorandum.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Oh, well, any questions from the board?
Do we have that memorandum? I don't know what...
Yes, you do.
I don't know what the sign is.
It's in your, it's in your packet.
I see Harb, okay.
Copy of Harb COA, and below that is copy of summary of May 8, 24. That's your memorandum.
Okay. Can't log in at the moment. So can I see what it looks like? You're so old school. Sorry.
No problem.
Any further questions from the board?
Let me look at it, I think. So it just says Joy.
There you go.
I did see it. I forgot.
Do I have any questions from the public? If not, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
All right. And I won't take up too much time, but I think you all know how I feel about preservation. So we did continue the conversation about moving forward in the township with uniform maintenance code, you know, ways to keep properties from, you know, going through demolition by neglect, as well as trying to preserve historically significant properties. So I appreciate the board's continued vision in moving forward with those items.
Can I ask you a question? Maybe you know the answer to this. I saw them doing some weed whacking and stuff by their rug places. Do you know what's going on? That's one of the places that are...
Yeah, so the building where the Oriental Rug Store was at the corner of Jefferson and Sycamore was sold recently, within the last couple of weeks, and the new owner is looking to really do a nice job of bringing that back to its historic preservation. So I think they even did start painting. They decided to just do in kind the color that had been previously approved. So I think they began that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So continuing, that the motion is approved by a count of three to zero. Now we have reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Peggy Driscoll is here from the Planning Commission to talk about what was discussed at last night's meeting.
Hi, good evening. Peggy Driscoll, Chair of the Newtown Township Planning Commission, to give you a synopsis of our meeting from May 21 last night. We had two zoning hearing board applications. The first is Jill McDate and Fred Binder at 511 Sterling Street. The applicants are seeking a variance to increase impervious surface to 25.1%, where 13% is the maximum permitted, and 15.3% is the existing impervious, to install a swimming pool and associated coping and decking. The commission recommends that the Board of Supervisors take no action, subject to a review by the township engineer, to confirm that the planned rain gardens are adequate to mitigate additional runoff. We also noted that the property has a small portion within Newtown Borough, not where the construction is planned, and questioned whether the Borough Code should be notified. Next, we had Sal Alia and Martha Caraza at 64 Cloverly Lane. The applicants are seeking a variance to increase impervious surface to 16.3%, where 12 is the maximum, and 13.2 is the existing impervious, and a special exception to order a building on a non-conforming lot, to expand the building by adding a second story and expanding the paved carport by 80 square feet. The commission recommends that the board take no action, subject to the condition that the proposed landscaping will adequately mitigate the increased impervious surface. And then the Planning Commission will meet only on the first Tuesday of the month for June, July, and August, and we will coordinate with the Codes Department to review all applications during our first meeting. And that was all we had? Any questions?
I had a question. I had noted that you had a meeting last night, and originally, this Newtown Equities, AKA...
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A was supposed to be brought up at your meeting, and they canceled that. I mean, now it's extended, but, and I note that in the, in the report, the Codes Weekly Report, latest Codes Weekly Report, maybe Mr. Micah might know about this, there's still, it's still scheduled for July 7, 2024, but it says timeline waived. Do you, anybody know what's going on?
The timeline under the MPC was waived by the applicant.
Sorry, say that again.
The timeline under the MPC for the zoning hearing board to hear the application was waived by the applicant.
Why is it still on this Codes Weekly Report?
It's a placeholder.
But there's a date.
It's still an active project.
So that date, does that date mean anything?
No.
It's meaningless.
It's meaningless. Until they, until they notify the township that they want to proceed with the application.
Well, usually, in the Codes Weekly Report, that's taken off the top table and brought down to...
When it moves to land development, it'll move, yes.
Okay. All right. I just don't want them sneaking in in July when everybody's on vacation.
Thank you. Does anybody wish to take a position on this, or we just vote?
That'll come up under my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now we come to board member comments. Since our chair is away, I will mention that I was at the Newtown Fire Association meeting Monday night, where there was a call, and our firefighters were out the door in 60 seconds, which kind of blew my mind, and I was so very impressed by that. I wanted to mention how proud I am that we have the Fire Association that takes their business so seriously and does the job. It was really nice to see. Also, the family was there who lost their home on Mahogany Walk, and I'm sure the chief is going to talk about that a little bit, but they gave a very generous donation to the Newtown Fire Association. And that's all from my report. Mr. Secretary-Treasurer?
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Calabro?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Brings us to our public hearings for the evening. First is our consideration of adoption of a resolution adopting the updated Newtown Area Joint Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Sander, can you take us through this, please?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I'd be pleased to. Thank you. This is a public hearing to consider adoption of the comprehensive plan update. As the board knows, the comprehensive plan has not been updated in quite some time. It was time to commence a review of the comprehensive plan and the update. The joint chair municipalities worked closely with the Bucks County Planning Commission during this endeavor. The updated comprehensive plan has been extensively vetted by all three townships and their planning commissions. Our planning commission has recommended approval to this board, and if the board is of a mind, and we will have to take comment, public comment before we vote, but it would be appropriate to consider a motion at this point to adopt Resolution Number 2024-R-8, adopting the Newtown Area Joint Comprehensive Plan update.
Do we have a second? I'll second. Any board questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question for the solicitor. Knowing that this is done every 10 years, and the last time the contract expired was 2019, now that we're in 2024, five years down the road, will it still be renewed in 2029 according to the last contract date?
I would guess not. If it's adopted now in 2024, it'll go, it'll run for the next 10 years and be considered in 2034 for an update.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I noted before that this, well, as you said, this is like five years behind schedule, and some of the predictions in here, especially principle number one under housing, under, what's it called, smart growth, the numbers that are presented are for 2020 to 2030. Now, we're already into 2025, so this is sort of out of date. I don't want to delay this, really. I just want to make a point that so far, we've had developers come in here. You were predicting something like 224 new residents between 2020 and 2030, whereas the developers coming in here, I'm getting an idea, it's more like 400 or 500, just from the ones that have already been approved, like Makefield, Toll Brothers, a couple out on Upper or Lower, Upper Silver Lake Road, and in the Newtown area here, totaling up nearly 746. Now, I know the one down the road from Wawa might be extinct in the sense that the Newtown Sewer Authority wants to take over that land, so that probably won't be built, but still, your prediction of 224 is way low. And as a matter of fact, the developers are coming in here challenging our zoning, and so, you know, it's a real problem that is not really addressed in this plan, how to deal with those problems. But you also say in here that, you're saying residential uses permitted by zoning ordinance may also be appropriate in a portion of areas north of the bypass in the OR district. Such usage should generally not be permitted in the office and research areas south of the bypass, yet you've submitted a code for OLI, LII overlay, which does have housing, mixed-use housing, so it's a little contradictory.
Well, that is north of the bypass. The LI, OLI proposal is north of the bypass. The OR is south of the bypass.
The Business Commons is north of the bypass?
Yes.
The Business Commons is north of the bypass?
I think there may be a confusion on the directions.
All right. Sorry about that. But in any case, it's a little bit out of date, but let that go. You want to talk about it? It's fine, if you'd like.
Jeremy Staff, Bucks County Planning Commission. I just want to speak to the, to the issue of the residential development areas analysis. I think, a couple things. First, I think we have to be careful not to conflate projected growth with the new, new housing developments that are being proposed. So there are two separate categories that we're looking at. When we did the residential development areas analysis, we used the most current population projections that were available to us, which are still the most current ones that are available to us. And, and kind of the purpose of that exercise was, it was essentially, it was simply a supply and demand analysis. So we are working off of population projections that are provided from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, and we just wanted to make sure that within the joint chair, based on those population projections, there's a suitable amount of land to accommodate that projected growth, because if there's not, then you run into a situation where now you have to start thinking about where can we allow for more housing. But that was not the case, and we found that there was a suitable amount of land that could accommodate the projected population growth. So that was, that was essentially the purpose of that analysis.
Right, but the developers are saying there's not enough suitable land that are already zoned for that type of housing, so they're going into areas like the OR district, which was not zoned for that type of housing, and demanding that it, that they re-change our ordinances to allow for it. But in any case, that's zoning under the bridge. The other comment I had had to do with the, I don't want to delay this, so, you know, let it be, basically, but one of the other criticisms I had was the cover design. I don't think many people are actually going to read this, but they're going to see the cover somewhere, somehow. And right now, you've got two iterations, and one, the latest one has the Washington Crossing Bridge, which is half-owned by New Jersey, I think, and Tyler State Park, and I've hardly been to that park in two years, but the previous cover had some people in there from Wrightstown, like the Wrightstown Market, and I would like to see more images of actual residents, and I submitted to you a few ideas, and I understand that changing that this could be a contentious process of getting the right illustrations in there, but I'd like you to consider maybe things like Market Day in Newtown, which happens every year, and it's coming up actually pretty soon. It's a big event with lots of people, right? And also some other things that are unique to Newtown, for example. I don't know about the other towns, what they might want in there, but I just thought maybe we can reconsider the cover design.
If it's okay with you, I would just like to get through the business at hand, and we can, you can certainly, and I might agree with you, you can certainly submit that and the pictures that you like, but if we could get on with what's on the agenda, because we have a few things about the comprehensive plan, I would greatly appreciate it.
Sure. I did submit some information, so we could talk.
Yeah, and I would also defer to the solicitor on this, but I think any tweaks that are made to the cover, especially in terms of swapping pictures out, I don't think would, you know, have any bearing on the process.
That's correct.
Correct.
Madam Chair, would it be appropriate to take public comment at this time?
Do we have any public comment about this issue in particular? Seeing none?
No, no, no. There is, there is a person.
Valerie Mahalik, Newtown Walk. We were just wondering, what's the OR district?
Office Research.
And where is that?
It's on the bypass where Wawa's going.
On Lower Silver Lake Road?
Where LaSalle, or it used to be LaSalle, the college is over there.
KAR.
Yeah, yeah. It's on the south side of the bypass, heading out toward 295.
So that's the only area that you're referring to, is the OR district?
I believe that's the only OR district in the township.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other public comment? And I won't jump the gun. Sorry about that. If not, I'll...
Can you remind us what we're voting on again?
To adopt a resolution to adopt the comprehensive plan update.
Do I have a motion?
Well, we have a motion in a second. We're ready to take the vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Passes three to zero.
Thank you. The next public hearing, Madam Chair, is on to consider the enactment of an ordinance amending the joint municipal zoning ordinance regarding non-conforming structures. This originated with, I believe, either Wrightstown or Upper Makefield. I'm not sure. It did not come from Newtown, but it involves a minor change to an existing provision in the joint municipal zoning ordinance dealing with the expansion of a non-conforming structure. And basically, it adds that the height of the expansion cannot exceed the height of the principal structure, and that is the only change that it makes. Again, this is a public hearing, so we'll have board comments and public comment, but if the board's of a mind, it would be a motion to enact Joint Municipal Zoning Ordinance Number 2022. Number 2022-04 regarding non-conforming structures.
Do we have such a motion?
I'll make that one.
Do we have a second? Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Solicitor, does this mean that there are existing non-conforming and they just can't build a higher height to the building?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not eliminating non-conforming, it's just making the adjustments. And could, just for the public and even for my sake, can you explain a non-conforming structure?
Sure. A non-conforming structure is a structure that was built prior to the enactment of the current zoning ordinance, which violates the ordinance but is grandfathered in and can continue to exist and, under certain circumstances, expand under the zoning ordinance.
So this has nothing to do with a prior ordinance of which, I guess they wanted to eliminate any kind of commercial structures being built on properties of certain acreage?
That's correct. It does not have anything to do with that.
Okay. Thank you.
There isn't any other questions? If there aren't, all in favor?
Well, Madam Chair, we have to ask for public comment. That's all right.
Excuse me. I'll get it though.
It's all right.
Any public comment? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. And the final public hearing this evening, Madam Chair, is a public hearing to consider the enactment of an ordinance amending the jointure agreement by adoption of addendum number nine. This goes not to amending the zoning ordinance itself, but rather to amending the agreement that is in existence between Newtown Township, along with Upper Makefield and Wrightstown, regarding how the jointure operates and works. There were eight previous addenda to the original agreement. This is addendum number nine, and in its wisdom, the Joint Zoning Council decided to restate the entire agreement, so you don't have to go looking through eight different addenda. You can just pull this up, and this is the current form of the entire agreement. The two principal changes that this agreement makes are eliminating references to the Joint Planning Commission, which was a prior body that reviewed all zoning ordinances. The jointure decided to leave the local planning commissions to do their work without having a joint planning commission. And secondly, it states that no matter how many folks attend per township, that each township only gets one vote on Joint Zoning Council business. So those are the two principal changes. Otherwise, it restates the agreement in full. If the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-0-2 to adopt addendum number nine to the jointure agreement.
I will make that one. Any question, any other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Solicitor. Does this also?
Wait, who's that?
He's knocking on the window up there.
Oh.
I got him.
Oh.
I think that was for me specifically.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
This also would prohibit if there are multiple people from one particular township, that one person can't make a motion, and the second comes from a person of the same township. Is that correct?
That I would have to look at. Mr. Claw, I'm not sure it gets into that much detail.
Well, this would be a conflict of interest if Newtown were to make a motion, and the second was from another person from Newtown.
Right. I agree. I agree. Again, no matter how many folks show up from a township, if one township makes a motion, another township has to second it.
And the vote comes from the three townships?
And the vote comes from the three townships. Correct. Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeking none, I'll ask the question. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes the public hearings for this evening.
Moving right along, we have no land development items on the schedule tonight, which brings us to the report of Mr. Kandari. And before you begin, I'd like to try to ask you to answer in brevity, if you can, about the question about the signals at the two places that we are concerned about, Terrible Laverne and Silo Drive.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, since our last meeting, we have been progressing with the signal plans, per the Penn dot comments, and we expect to have a submission back to Penn dot within the next couple of weeks. I think one of the questions was, will the revised plans address all the comments that were given to us from Penn dot? And yes, they will address all the Penn dot comments. So we are moving forward with the redesign, and we will be submitting for our Penn dot approval shortly.
I hope that helps. I think we're hopefully going as fast as we can, and we will keep on pushing for it. Promise you that. Okay? Engineers' report, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm here to recommend financial security release for the Rose Casual Dining Applebee's Patio. We performed a final site inspection. Based upon said inspection, we deemed the project to be complete per the plans, and we are recommending that the township release the amount of $23,880 to the developer from the financial security held for the completion of required site improvements at the development. I'll just note that after this release, there are no financial security funds remaining.
Thank you. Do we have such a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions from the board?
What is Rose Casual Dining? Is that the same?
It's the company that owns and operates this Applebee's and several others. It's a Newtown company. Yes.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? With that, I'll call the question. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero for financial release.
I have another question for VR engineer, if you don't mind, about, there's something on the bills list regarding a traffic impact study at the corners of Newtown, a charge of $1,125.
That's right.
Has that study been submitted to RVE for review, or how does that work?
Yeah, we were tasked with doing the traffic impact study for the, as you mentioned, the corners of Newtown Place, which will be presented to the planning commission.
RVE did the traffic study?
We are doing, performing a traffic impact study, yes.
I thought the developer was responsible for that, so they're not doing their own traffic study, or?
Yeah, we are reviewing what they had proposed and performing our own traffic impact study on behalf of the township.
Okay. Has that been completed?
Not yet, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Item number one on the solicitor's report this evening is consideration of enactment of an ordinance to incur $1 million in debt by the issuance of a general obligation note for LED lighting and road paving projects. This matter has been authorized previously by the board, and right now, we're going through the formal process of incurring the debt. An ordinance is required by the Local Government Unit Debt Act to be enacted and then submitted to D C E D, along with other proceedings, seeking approval from D C E D prior to being able to actually close on the loan. So this ordinance is a critical cog in that procedure. If the boards have a mind, it would be a motion to enact ordinance number 2024-0-3 to incur $1 million debt for the LED lighting and road paving projects.
Do we have such a motion? I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions from the board? I have a little statement to make.
Sure.
I know I'm asked questions about incurring debt. In order to improve and modernize our township, we take on projects like this. It's state of the art, and it's important. We have to keep things going when we can like this, because we have to keep up with the technology with every township around us. It all has to mesh together, and that is why we are incurring this project, and it's a good project. LED lighting is a good project. Get us away from regular incandescent lighting, and that's just my short explanation in lieu of a question. Do we have any other board questions?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question for the manager. This $1 million that we're borrowing, in the past, we have done it before in regards to the road program, and we've paid it back over a three-year period, and then we do it again. So this way, every three years, we borrow a million dollars, but pay it back within a three-year period. This million dollars is not going totally to the LED lights, is that correct?
No, it's for three different projects. It's for road paving next year, LED lighting conversion in this building in Public Works, and the streetlights.
Okay. Now, if there wasn't three different projects, we would still be borrowing the million dollars for the road program, correct?
It probably would have been proposed in the budget.
So we're not doing anything additional and above and beyond. We're following the schedule as far as repaving our 80 miles of road. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Any from the public?
John DiApril, Newtown Grant. You say it's a necessary option. Not all the surrounding townships, I don't even know any of them personally, do not have LED lighting. Now, we're taking out a loan to pay for this. Why? You know, you're saying it's to do. Let me remind you that I always bring up that in your regulations and everything, you don't allow businesses to have LED lighting, and you're not changing that, are you? So I think it's kind of ridiculous to make us go into debt, which means taxes are probably going to get raised again and again and again. After the three-year project, you'll get raised again and again and again. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Hearing none, I will ask the question. All in favor of incurring this $1 million debt? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Of course not. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last item on our report this evening are the two zoning hearing board applications that you heard reported on by Ms. Driscoll. You have the planning commission's recommendations on them. Does the board wish to take a position on either of those residential applications? I am here. Well, I'll give it five seconds.
Again, I would just like to say that as long as our engineers are working on stormwater management for particularly the Bender project, that.
Yes, we've been assured that they have to apply for a grading permit that will be reviewed by the engineer, and the engineer will ensure stormwater facilities are appropriate. Okay, hearing crickets. That concludes our.
Thank you. That brings us to our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. General fund balance this evening is $7,636,896. Plan expiration is before the board with no action required. We have Chief Forsythe to give his monthly E S D report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to report for the month of April. We responded to 131 calls for service. We completed 44 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township, five use and occupancy inspections, one fire alarm inspection, three consultations. In Newtown Borough, we completed 20 fire safety inspections, two use and occupancy inspections, and for our 131 calls for service, we responded to 74 EMS calls, 26 alarm systems, six water flow alarms, two brush fires, nine dwelling fires. We assisted the squad five additional times. We responded to three traffic accidents. We had two investigations, one fumes-in call, two wires-outside calls, and one building fire. Our highlights for the month of April, we did something different this year. The Homewood Suites had their fire alarm system go down, their sprinkler system. We required them to have a fire watch. They didn't have anybody to do that, so they hired the township and the fire department responded with two firefighters. It was reimbursed, and we provided a fire watch from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The sprinkler system was repaired within that time, so that's something else that our department has reached out to assist the property owners with. April 4th, our new firefighters started. April 6th, we had the sound alarm event at Newtown Grant. We installed 295 smoke detectors that day. That was a huge success, and we are continuing today installing smoke detectors in residents that do not have working smoke detectors. April 7th, we conducted our first of three live burns. For the year, every firefighter is required to go through a live burn. We go to the training center in Bristol. We're there for an entire day. We go through about eight different evolutions and different types of fires, so we've completed the first one of three. April 10th, we participated in the touch-a-truck event with the parking wreck at Veterans Park. April 10th, the board supervisors were kind enough to swear in all the new firefighters, and our training for the month of April was all done in ropes and rigging exercises. Two members of emergency services participated and attended the rescue task force training, and our staff conducted a presentation at the monthly American Legion meeting on fire safety. I must say tonight, and Micah will get a chuckle out of this, I have to congratulate Chief Hearn and the police department. May 10th, with our event at Newtown Middle School, it was changed to an inside event. We had a wiffle ball game instead of a softball game, and the darn cops, they beat us 10 to nine. So I do have to say, we had a great time. The money that we raised went to the Bucks County Hero Scholarship Fund, and we're looking forward to, Chief Hearn wants to do some other games like volleyball and different things, so. I will say that the fire department participated with all firefighters. The police department participated with all police officers, except as many cops as we have, they had to reach out to other departments for help. So I think the fire department can take a little recognition for that, so.
Ringers.
Ringers, that's what it was. They brought in the big guys. So that's our report for the month of April, and again, we had a great time at the wiffle ball game. We're going to recruit Micah next time to play for the fire department, so if anybody's interested, just let me know. Any questions?
Yes, can I ask you to talk a little bit about the donation that you received the other night?
The Winkler family live on Mahogany Walk, and they are, they live in the townhouse section, the road that was affected by the fire. Monday night, they, their family attended our fire department meeting, and they made a contribution to the Fire Association, a very sizable contribution. And Mr. Winkler is an employee for PICO, and PICO, if we do the proper paperwork, they will match the contribution that his family made to the fire department. So it's going to be, it's a pretty sizable donation to the fire department. We did have a conversation. We did have a conversation in our meeting, that money will be used for investigative needs, so we're trying to figure out what equipment we can purchase. So there's a lot of conversations going on now to see the proper way to spend the money because of the contribution that was made for the help and the job that we did on Mahogany Walk. I will say that the Winkler family also made a donation to the police department. That was a huge event for both departments and the people in Newtown Grant, I think, appreciate what the fire department does and what the police department does and this is just one example that one family reached out to us and showed their appreciation by making an extremely generous contribution to the fire department.
Thank you. I also want to thank you in advance for your help of putting in my fire detectors tomorrow.
You're quite welcome.
I appreciate it. I can't reach.
Anyone else needs a working smoke detector, please contact the fire department. We'll be more than happy to help you out.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Madam Chair, next item under our report is the authorization to sell used equipment. Public Works Director put together a list of equipment and machinery that we no longer require and we're requesting to sell it to generate some revenue. The appropriate motion would be authorization to sell used equipment.
Do I have such a motion?
Show me.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions from the board?
What kind of used equipment are you talking about?
Well, I'll tell you.
Okay.
There, it comprises Public Works vehicles, Public Works equipment, Public Police vehicles, used police emergency lighting and various equipment, old camera systems and old Taser components.
But I can't buy a Taser. This goes through some organization? How does that work?
We typically post this stuff on municipal bid.
Seeing that, I will...do we have a motion? Any comments from the public? I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Passes three to nothing.
Thank you. Next item under our report is the authorization to execute the memorandum of understanding with Bucks County to access their CAD system. The CAD system is a computer-aided dispatch service system that was affected when they were hacked by ransomware. So they're requiring all the municipalities to sign a memorandum of understanding that they'll maintain certain provisions on their equipment, township-owned equipment, to prevent hacking. So they've provided us with the MOU and none of the police departments will be able to access the system until it's approved. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to execute the MOU with Bucks County to access CAD system.
Do we have such a motion?
So...
I'll second that. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? No. Sorry, I have to say that. It's only three of us, but... Motion passes three to nothing.
Thank you. Final item under our report is the authorization to purchase police radios from Motorola. We had budgeted a total of $15,000. The quote we got is for $14,892.09. The appropriate motion would be authorization to purchase police radios from Motorola through Co-Stars in the amount of $14,892.09.
Do we have a motion?
Uh huh.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board?
Motorola, I thought they went out of business.
No.
They're still in business, eh?
And we're saving $108 from what is budgeted. Got to love that. Any questions from the public? With that, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Passes three to nothing.
That concludes our report. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. That brings us to our minutes and bills list. I'll pass it to you.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Second. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? Passes three to nothing.
Regarding the bills list of May 22, 2024, I move that we pay our bills totaling $273,848,36.
Do we have a second? I'll second that. Do we have any questions from the board? From the public? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Passes three to nothing.
Finally, I move that we approve funds transfer of $269,905 per the May 22, 2024 bills list.
Any questions from the board? From the public? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to nothing. That brings us to our second round of public comment.
Bradley Cooper, Newtown Grant resident since 1999, and through the past couple of years, we have approved different projects for many different reasons. You guys say, I can't say it's the right decision. I can't say that the decision that you tell us why you did that was right or wrong, but that's what you told us and we have to live and die by those rules and policies and your decisions and what you tell us why you did that, like the Wawa that was adamantly protested, like the Toll Brothers project on Twining Bridge Road, DeLuca, the two gentlemen that lived around there, didn't want that. People came out and supported them, said they didn't want that. And the new one that happened a couple of weeks ago where you guys approved for a daycare center down the road. It seems like when residents come in here for these issues or problems, and not just two, there's 10, there's 15, there's 20, and it seems like at the end of the day, for whatever reason you want to justify or tell us that you go with the applicant and they always win, they always get what they want, they always get whatever it is, and the residents are here, at least myself, I don't want to speak for them, that you always side with them and it seems like, well, what about us? The only people that can speak for us are our supervisors, that we go to you, tell us we don't want this, the reasons behind it. And we're not just saying, oh, because we hate this company, they're, you know, a crappy company, or they did me wrong, they ruined my roof and I don't want them to get any more money by building development. We're not even doing that. We're giving you facts, we're giving you details and we're giving you really good arguments that if you were in court, you could use them. Not saying you'd win, but we're not just giving out just some baloney stuff just to say, we don't want them because of this or that. And it's really disheartening, at least to me, that I see all this stuff happening and it seems like residents don't get a voice because it's always like, they win, they win, they win. I don't know a single project in the past couple of years that the applicant didn't win, that we actually won and said, hey, we stopped them. So I wish that would be something more that we can do when we know stuff is coming up and not worry about little things that, you know, affect one or two people and worry about how to make them happy when the rest of us are upset about something and never gets, you know, stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Valerie Mahalik from the Newtown Walk community. Should have brought my glasses. Okay, in regard to the, you know, the crosswalk and what we're looking for, I just have a question. Does a revised plan, I guess this is more towards the engineer, include the three pedestals with the mast with one signal control and the refuge island? Or is it a mast arm extending over the complete Newtown Yardley Road?
This would have the three pedestals in lieu of the mast arm over Newtown Yardley Road with the refuge island.
Okay, so, okay, good. So there is no big mast arm going over the road?
That is, yes, that's, that's, that was PennDOT's comments that we are doing the redesign on right now, yeah.
So it's similar to what takes place up at the courthouse in Doylestown? That's what they have. Because when we would, when we came a couple of times to propose something, we went to the courthouse and to other locations in Lower Makefield by the ball field. They have the big mast arm, but up at the courthouse, which also had a line of sight issue, it didn't have the mast arm, it just had the freestanding poles, which is what we had proposed. So that's what we're going with?
That's what's going to be on the revised design, yeah.
Great.
Based off of PennDOT's review comments.
Okay, that's great. And also, now that the Lincoln Avenue and Washington Boulevard crosswalk area is done, do we know, is it going to be black with that historic-looking look like it is there since it's coming out of the borough just to keep that uniform look going?
I, I'm not, I don't know if I'm prepared to answer that question tonight. The Lincoln and Washington crosswalk?
Yeah, so they just redid the whole intersection there and they took down the existing traffic signals there in the borough, again, for the pedestrian safety. It's not a rapid flashing light like we're going to have, but the mast arms and the directional are all black to continue that historic look within the borough and since we're literally right outside of the borough and we're the next project right after that, is there any way we could request that it stay with that type of a look?
I suppose that's something we can discuss with the township staff, see if that's what they want to pursue. You know, I'm sure there might be some cost implications that we'd have to consider.
Okay. I guess we could always look at the borough and see what it was, you know, for them, just trying to keep it uniformed. And then, I'm sorry, the last question is, do we have any ideas to what the timeline of events, the process of steps from tonight's meeting to move forward? As Charlie said in his email, we've been working on this project, next month will be two years.
This is, this is the last step before we can start putting together a package to go out for bid for construction. So assuming PennDOT, we submit back to PennDOT, you know, it could take another couple of weeks, a month for them to review and give us an approval and then at that point, again, putting together the bid package to go out for bid, which is another couple of weeks to a month, and then we go through that whole bidding process and construction process.
So is it safe to say we're not looking at have construction start for that, for this project this year?
I would not rule that out.
Okay. I'm sorry, what did you say?
I don't think we could, we would rule that out. I mean, we're, again, we're at the last step here with the PennDOT approval, hopefully, then it's a matter of just getting it out to bid and to construction. But, you know, there's some things that have to fall in line for all that to go smoothly. So that would be best-case scenario, I think.
Okay. It's just last year before the year ended, we had thought by now we would be a lot further along, you know, than we are and we would just like to at least see construction begin this year. As I said, next month it'll be two years.
Thank you.
Hi, Charles Foyer again, Newtown Walk. With regard to the Newtown Yardley Tara mid-block crosswalk, to bring Mr. Kundari up to speed, previous to your being the township engineer, I believe it was Leanna Calubriali, and prior to your attending these meetings, I submitted the specific bid response from the intersection at Lincoln and Washington with the company name, the decorative fixtures, which are consistent with what Mrs. Mahalik just pointed out. And so you have, unless you don't have what Leanna Calubriali got that I submitted to the board and to the township engineer, and at that time, it was agreed by the board that the decorative fixtures, the three masts, would be black in the decorative fashion. So I don't know if you need to be brought up to speed, but it's not a question of, it's already been discussed.
I think we said we would look into that.
Right. I want to make sure that Mr. Kundari includes it in the bids.
Yes.
So that we don't waste time waiting for another bid because it wasn't put in the bid.
I understand.
Just bringing the point up.
Right. We're working...
Just to help speed things along.
We're working in the confines of the grant that we received with a certain amount of money and so...
Right. And the additional tax increase that was earmarked for that as well, too.
So all of that will be taken into consideration, I assure you.
Yeah. Thanks so much.
Okay. Moving on. Oh, you're okay? Somebody else? I'm sorry. How could I forget?
John D. April, Newtown Grant, and echoing what Mr. Cooper said, you know, yeah, a lot of people get up here and talk and you do nothing about it, do the exact opposite most of the time, like Brad said, and I know that for sure. You know, if I had a dollar for every person that came up to me and watched this thing on TV in the 20-something years I've been coming up here at the supervisors' meeting, I could take you a lot to dinner. Not that I'd want to, but I could, you know. Anyhow, notice that, and a few other people did, because it was brought up to me, I didn't want to say anything about it, but if you notice that there's certain supervisors that always harp on, they always pick on things in their neighborhood. You know, most of the township lives west of the borough, not east of the borough, west of the borough. And, you know, when you see, you know, the people's wants and things like that and I'm looking for the flower thing you want to do for Roberts Ridge Park. Is that coming up tonight? Am I going to have a chance to say something on that or do I say it now? You know, getting back to what Mr. Cooper said, yeah, sometimes you guys do, sometimes, very rarely, do listen to the people. And, I mean, there was, there was a project that went to court twice and we won, we actually won. And then, you see, third time's a charm? No, it wasn't a charm because the township hired help, screwed up, and you end up getting million-dollar houses anyway, which they were supposed to, road improvements, not done yet, there's people living in those houses and are building more. So, you know, I want you guys to do something. You were elected for the township, not Democrats or Republicans, you were elected for the township. And raising taxes every year, you know, sucks. It basically sucks. And, you know, young guys like Brad and the young people in the township are going to have to see that all the time. I mean, I'm an older guy, I'm not going to be around forever and, you know, I get breaks anyway from being old. But, you know, the young people, you know, make it affordable and make, you know, it's tough enough paying the price of these houses and, you know, when you keep on raising taxes and stuff and, you know, when I first moved here, 29 years ago, funny story, I was paying more for a single house in Philadelphia in real estate taxes than I was in Newtown, in my townhouse in Newtown Grant. And, you know, it's not that we now, but, you know, 29 years ago, that was a fact and, you know, as the taxes go up... 29 years ago, that was a fact. And, you know, as the taxes go up, everything goes up, the state raises the taxes, the school board goes crazy, and, and all that stuff. So, just make a little harder for the, the, the decisions you make. Thank you.
Can you turn the mic off?
Sure. Remember, keep your phone.
I would just like to say, I think we listen to the residents all the time and do the best that we possibly can, which brings us to new business. And we do have some new business, and it was at the beginning, going to be at the beginning of the agenda, but we've moved it down because we would like all the supervisors to hear about this when I do talk about it. Last week was Native Species Week, and here in Bucks County, we're lucky to have Bowman's Hill Wildflower Preserve, the only one in the country. It seems appropriate that Newtown, where we prioritize environmental consciousness, that we should bring a similar initiative to our community. In 2019, neighbors collaborated to plant, to plant 32 native trees in Roberts Ridge Park. Each family that participated donated $100 to kickstart this project. With their contributions, I was able to purchase trees, mulch, fencing, and plaques for each tree chosen by the families. Some wrote in memories of loved ones past, some wrote a meaningful quote, or some wrote the names of their children, as I did. In November of that year, we gathered for a planting event showcasing the power of community coming together. The garden that, the pollinator garden that is planned, if we get a positive reaction and a positive vote from the board, will feature hundreds of native bushes, grasses, and flowering, and flowers, not only for the enjoyment of our residents, but for educational purposes as well. By creating this ecosystem in Roberts Ridge Park, we are contributing to the circle of life in our own small way. Each plant plays a role in the food chain that sustains this circle, from caterpillars to birds, with caterpillars being the vital food source for birds. It's essential to understand that by encroaching on habitats through construction, we disrupt the delicate balance that these plants, insects, and birds rely on. We have funds in a deferred account to create a large portion of this garden. We can kickstart this project in one of our most beautiful parks, Roberts Ridge Park, which we all, already had a community event to start this project in 2019. When completed, we will stake a plaque with a QR code that our community, and especially our kids, can access a directory which will identify each plant and their purpose in the circle of life, along with any sponsors that help us along the way. This will be a community planting event. We already have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Bucks Beautiful, other EACs from other townships, a STEAM program at our high school, all whose people want to contribute to plant this park, this educational park, within a park, at Roberts Ridge Park. So, we'll be talking about that more at our next meeting, when all of the supervisors are here, and that's my spiel.
Just make a comment. I mean, sorry, my back is killing me. I like the idea, but it doesn't encroach upon the MS4 program where Roberts Ridge Park is, big swaths of it are going to, turf is going to be killed, and I thought wildflowers would be planted in the areas designated by the MS4 program. Is that still true, Mr. Lewis, that this is happening? We had a memo from DCNR, I believe, on it.
The Meadow conversion?
The Meadow, yeah.
Yes, that's still happening.
Are those also kind of wildflowers going to be?
Yes.
Part of that? But what I like about this is you can actually walk through it. There's a pathways there, and it says it comes from, money comes from the deferred revenue account, and Mr. Lewis said payment for the materials will be made from the deferred revenue account, which was donated by the NAC as a part of a prior settlement. You said the total in that account is $9,200, but I'm looking back at November 23, Board of Supervisors meeting, the development agreement with NAC, NAC posted $12,500 for tree replacement, which I assume is in this. I'm wondering what happened to the $3,300, the difference between what you say is $9,200 and $12,500, which was reported at the November 23, 2021 Board of Supervis... So, there might be additional $3,300. What happened to the $3,300?
Can you just explain what a deferred revenue account is?
Sure. Deferred revenue account is an, an account that is, houses the money that was provided and assigned for a certain defined project. Another example is the opioid funds that are coming in from the settlement, various settlements.
So, although the NAC, they donated this money because they removed 23 trees from their territory, I believe, looking back at the minutes, and it was supposed to be replanting of trees, but it can be used for other purposes like, like this wildflower, I guess?
With board approval, yes. Correct.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was, there was no action, there was no motion. So, public comment is over, and.
I was wrong. And there was no executive session tonight?
That's correct.